Hello hello everybody good morning good afternoon good evening wherever you're at while you're watching this video. I just wanted to say hello to you we are going to go over a work session here at Land Love Home. I'm Dominic I am the creator of the channel and I'm super excited just to go through an hour long work session with you guys today we're going to be jumping into some keyword research. We're going to do high level and if we have some time we'll get into more granular ideas. This should take about an hour or so so once we hit the sixty minute mark I'm gonna allow myself to end and stop the video there. Um it's not quite at a quarter of an hour or like a half an hour or on the hour right now. So we'll just go as I feel fit for the video um really depends on how the hour transpires. Since we're gonna be sharing my screen I'm gonna be showing you what I'm actually doing and explaining it. If something else catches me or I want I find something else that I want to dive deeper into while I while I talk through this thing. Um then I will go ahead and do that and share that with you guys if not then again like I said I'm gonna allow myself to uh stop for the hour and call it there. So the key points I want you to take away from this video is that it is an example of me both working on the business and in the business at the same time. Well what do you mean by that Dominic what I mean by that is working on the business because this video is for a specific purpose that I need to do for the YouTube channel the second reason or the second thing working in the business is that I'm actually completing work that has to be done so that we can produce content alright I'm gonna have my headphones on I'm gonna be vibing out for the hour. Um because as you'll see what I'm doing it's very rudimentary task it's just kinda like going through the motions over and over again. However it's very important and it helps open up the rest of what we do here in regards to like our video creation and our content creation. So go ahead sit back relax and enjoy I'm gonna drop out of this presentation we'll switch over to where we will be working today. And we can get started so let's go ahead drop this out drop this in. Alright so as you see here we have my construction research folder um construction land development is like one of my overarching niches that I have under the umbrella of real estate so again if you remember one of my other introductory videos I have a real estate background and so like I'm still super passionate about that field. I still see myself being highly successful in that field and even though I haven't achieved it yet I'm going to achieve it. And I feel like this YouTube channel is just another way that I can express that by reaching out to more people in the world that are also in my industry love what I do have done what I want to do and can mentor me you know and bring me along the ride. And also learn more about the industry and a cohesive you know macrocosm type field so that way as I'm going through completing my role in the industry and what I want to do in the industry I'll just be that much more effective for it and add it. So back to what you see on the screen here we still have several different of the uh trades that we need to do keyword research for and so this high level keyword research you can see I've finished construction electrician HVAC masonry and carpentry and I still have electrical because different things come up for that term as opposed to electrician. I still need to do landscaping painting plumbing and woodworking because again woodworking excuse me is a different term than carpentry although they mean the same thing they're different terms and actually when I looked into this a little bit deeper um the previous day I was doing this woodworking search volume was actually higher than carpentry. So what I know to be carpentry more people in the world apparently connect that to the term woodworking as opposed to carpentry. So that's something new that I learned we'll see how that you know affects the topics and you know the keywords and the videos that we put out as we move through that thing like as we look deeper into it and see oh okay carpentry versus woodworking woodworking if we do one idea with carpentry how to whatever like carpentry basics versus woodworking basics which one are people searching more and which one should we go after and the answer is because I looked at this yesterday was woodworking woodworking basics had would have a higher search volume so it's just stuff like that that is more granular and today I also wanted to do this. I wanted to add another one so today we're not going to get that deep into it unless if like I said at the end of this hour. Um I feel the need to I want to however we are gonna be doing as much high level research as I can utilizing this oh utilizing this. Alright well I opened this one so we'll just start here um so this is the main keyword. And as you can see here I have a screenshot I have a secondary screen that you cannot see um which I will move over here so that you can see it. This screen is where the magic is gonna be happening at so we're just going to do this type in our keyword into YouTube YouTube search we will grab our handy dandy tool snipping tool. And actually let me restart that cuz I don't know if yeah I was worried that I didn't get all the search in the screenshots. So I'm glad I did that cuz I would have missed roofing tips and roofing business at the end there at the bottom which has happened. Alright perfect so then we take our screenshot and we paste it here. And so that's our main keyword we go down to the next one. And full screen and snip. So like I said it's very rudimentary just going through the motions and that's why I'm just gonna vibe out and play my music so I do apologize it's it's gonna be boring but you'll actually see somebody in the trenches you know doing what you should be doing or need to do for your business. If you're a YouTube content creator even if you're not this just doing this will give you ideas to come up with you know marketing vertical and or content for your business. And so what I like to do is just go through this entirely go all the way from A all the way down to Z and and from there go to the next one that I need to do A to Z um one of my mentors in the restaurant business pretty much taught me this you know just method of doing things. And for some people it may be common sense it's common sense to me now but it wasn't until I was taught right so when I used to work in the restaurant Chipotle actually I used to work in the back as the uh the bee cook or whatever I can't remember exactly what they call it but my job was to like prep the rice in the back one of one of the pieces of my job was to prep the rice in the back and when you prep the rice in the back you might do like five or ten pans you know at once for example uh because you know it's a commercial kitchen so we do large batches of of our food. And so when I cook the rice I have my five pans now tell me what would be faster right doing putting the rice in one pan covering the pan labeling the pan taping it up securing it and then putting it in the fridge. And then coming back doing the second pan doing the same thing labeling it putting it wrapping it up in the wrapping it up and putting it in the fridge. And then coming back to do the third pan and then going for that one pan start to finish and then to the next pan. Does that sound like efficient no right so what he taught me was to go through one fluid motion on all the pans and then come back and do the second fluid motion on all the pans. And so this was just a much a much more efficient and effective way to get the same thing done. Because you're doing one fluid motion for all five the next fluid motion for all five so while I have the the scoop in my hand to get that rice in into the pot. You know I'm not putting it down to pick up the tape and the Saran Wrap. Does that make sense so I'll just go through one fluid motion I'll come back go pick up my next set of tools or whatever I need for the next thing and then I'll come back get the next set of tools do it for all five pans I'll come back get the next set of tools you see what I'm saying? Or like put the tools down and like finish putting all of them up at the same time. So I I for this particular activity in the business I do it exactly like that I prefer to just go through pretty much unconsciously at this point. Um and just grab the ideas down using this ABC method so then once I have all of them A to Z at a later point I can go through the entire alphabet for this keyword and start coming up with ideas like actual like drilling down on the topic so that way so that way I'm doing that activity and that um task in one consecutive fluid motion. So that's really all I had to say about that if if I was to stop on every letter and like dive deep or dive deeper into research on each keyword that I saw here that I wanted to you know learn more about or talk about further then it would take me so lo- so much longer than an hour to actually do what I'm trying to do here. And the only objective for this video like I said is just to go through and get the high level keyword research done so that's really all I had to explain. Go ahead sit back relax and enjoy you can put some music on while I work and you can work at the same time it can be like a co-work session virtually and uh we can just vibe out together. Whoa 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 hold up. The only other thing I can think of to say at this point is that it's important to do this in the incognito tab. The incognito tab pretty much gives you a blank browser with none of your cookies. Your cookies and so the cookies are what kinda like say oh this person has been on this website before this is what they've done on this website. And so having an incognito tab and doing this research is what you want because you want unbiased YouTube. You don't want a YouTube that has your cookies in it and search terms remember that you searched. Again we're doing this for business purposes so it's really important that we get the raw data not anything biased to us or anything. I say I'm through for real. Next time I'll be through for real. Next time I'll be through for real. So these things that I'm deleting under these um screenshots as I'm putting them in are the ideas. Like more granular topic ideas so I always make sure to delete them as I'm going through doing new keywords because those old ones are for other keywords and if I was to come back here and start getting ideas from this things that I want to look into further things that I see people are searching for but I don't know what it is I'm confused about it I would just type the topic roofing tricks roofing tips for beginners like roofing TPO I don't know what that is so then I put question marks. So then that tells me to like search that and see if it's something that I can learn from or you know might want to create a video on. You don't do that with everything you just follow your intuition. Is my advice. So again I don't plan on doing that in this video here if I can really just focus on getting the ABC method completed for the last keywords that I have in my mind so far pretty much I've done um a lot of the I've done about half of the construction stuff that I wanted to do so far and for the interior design stuff I've done the two main ones that I'm going after for right now and I haven't went back there and added anything else to it. See like this one this one came up nothing right so then I don't even take that screenshot I just literally nothing. For whatever reason X is like that there's just not a lot of words that start with X. Drinking girl into a superhero yeah yeah. So this first one is done. King of the cup gotta get paid alright so this first one is done now. And that is the ABC method for keyword research at a high level. Um now that that's done we'll go to our next one. I'm just gonna go right down the list here. Ain't no facade ain't no fugazi I get paid I'm going crazy. Electrical code coach. It looks interesting. And this person said they came with a frost. Some of these things especially when you're getting into more technical terminology and fields that you're not very familiar with you learn you just learn like there's nothing you can do but learn about stuff. So as I'm going through the list like something that may not look like it makes sense to me you want to explore that because if it's something that's common to that trade and you don't ever talk about it then that's kinda hurting the veracity of your channel you know the the um integrity of the channel a little bit I feel. So you want to make sure that you do your research. I feel like that's also another reason just why the research aspect of this is so important you can't really skimp on delivering great content so just like how I ran my real estate business my focus was not on sales it was on service and so when I go through this I'm putting my all into this business like I'm putting my all into it and not to mention I'm focused on delivering impact and content that is truly helpful to people not just not just I don't know something that's I don't even know how to describe what I'm like thinking of right now but not no BS you know I mean I don't want to feed I don't want to feed the people and the professionals in my industry BS and stuff that they don't even care about. Or even the people interested in you know my my and our industry and what we do. I want to be giving them correct and true and accurate information we're to be right and exact in all that we do. Got a ring on it baby yes marriage. Want me to meet both parents. All angles. Hit that impasse. Yeah we're just vibing I appreciate y'all hanging out with me like I said on this work session we're almost halfway through the work session. Oh I forgot to start timing this I did wanna time see how fast fast or slow it's taking me how long or quickly I am able to do these all the way through without doing any of the granular idea stuff. Cuz like I said that that definitely slows you down. Man I've been playing for some years. I went big stones I even had two extra amps I even had spring tones. Oh you went. Oh you went. Set up the thing man. Fly around the world. Oh you went lining all up. I played for some years. There's some long tail keywords here electrical outlets not working but breaker not shut. So those ones you definitely want to do. It damn fast like the countdown. Going southbound and the balance is in my account now okay. Worked and it worked. Flying around the world. Man I've been playing for some years. Alright so yep keep moving on if I continue it's gonna it's just gonna make it worse for me. Uh see what I'm saying messing up my formatting alright. When you get an outdoor explorer. And that doesn't finish, you started up this. Then I don't go to go get it. He's trying to lay me on low down. Nobody's out of us. There's got octopus. So this is part of the job here. I'm almost finished this keyword, which is good, I've been rolling, I feel like. Which makes me feel fantastic, if I can get all of these done within this hour, that would be awesome. I ain't a savage, don't bring ya. Need my coffee to be a little closer here. Caught me with a funny face there for a second, that's kinda hilarious. If you can't laugh at yourself, then you're doing it wrong. So this looks like a big, a big winner here. Everybody wants to know about electrical wiring. So. Sometimes when you're doing this A B C method, you'll see that nothing actually came up for electrical X anything, this is all electric. So we don't want any of that, we're just gonna go ahead and skip, go to the next letter. Oops. We want that to go here, actually. There we go. Alright, last letter. Let me see, nah, don't matter, it's not that serious. I was just thinking I can go and clear all the ideas that I typed before I start. Rather than doing it as I go through, but doesn't matter that much, it's not taking me very long. Alright, so we're about to be at the thirty fourth minute of this recording, I'm gonna go ahead and mark in my time, that is when I started this. And we're gonna go ahead and see how long it takes us to do this keyword landscaping from beginning to end. Landscaping time lapses. That sounds kinda lit. Not even gonna lie. Oh no. Something happened to this. Let's go ahead and go back and get that over again. Alright, there we go. God bless me. Landscaping and gardening. So gardening may be another term that I have to add to this. Because it's a synonym, right? It's pretty much the same thing, but landscaping, I feel like is more on a professional level and scale. And I feel like gardening is more on a homeowner D O I Y scale. But I could be wrong, I'm not a gardener, I don't do landscaping. So I don't know. I don't know how much they cross over. And. How um. Disrespected, some people might feel by that. I've been learning in the interior design space. That there's a lot of overlap with interior designers and architects and interior architecture. Alright, I remember things by writing them down, so I just wrote down that thirty four minute starting point. Making good time here, I'm not going, I'm not really trying to go any faster than what I would regularly. To speed it up, you know, I'm just. Keep maintaining the same speed. Going through the motions, it's gonna take however long it's gonna take. And I'm also. Pulling it over in front of the screen, the window over in front of the screen. So that way everybody can still see. What I'm doing, now if I just showed you guys the. Showed you guys this screen the whole time where I'm actually place pasting in the. Screenshots, the video will be even more boring. So I'm just using the built in screenshot tool for Windows. It's nothing special. Pretty sure J K comes after J, yeah. So we're six minutes deep so far for. This keyword, we're at also, close to wrapping it up here. Mm hmm, you know, back over there. I don't know why, but I'm feeling really good today. I hope you are too wherever you are at. Just something different about that energy when you're being productive and it's, you know, for yourself. And it was in the payroll. And the image you know. And it's like, and it's back row. Then there's another Apollo. X. Y Z. Landscaping your mind. Very interesting. Very, very interesting. What in the hell is that all about? Hermetic craft season nine animate animatic. Yes, so I don't think that's anything that I actually care about. It sounded interesting. Um, but yeah, actually nothing. Nothing that I cared about was behind that search. Alright, awesome. So about ten minutes. If I wouldn't have had a couple pauses here and there, I would have probably been under the ten minute mark. But now landscaping is done. And we're at the forty five minute mark, so. Let's see, we've done three so far. Electrical landscaping roofing. Yep, we have three left, hopefully we can get at least two more done. We can come back and do. China love you girl, I don't know what the, you used to. Where I been? Wonder where I been? First to find the love within. I came back to let you know. Wonder where I been? Who you been with, wondering you been, who you been with, wondering you been, who you been with? Back to let you know. Got a thing for you and I can't let go. Actually, I think I might just. Thug it out here. Finish these last three keywords because then I can really say, alright, this task is finished, oops, sitting at the staring at the screen. And just say that this, this task is finished. And really start deep diving into the video topics. I'm not stuck there by any means, because like I said, I've already completed this. For several different of the main keywords that I'm trying to, you know, rank for and be become known for. For the brand and. And so I'm not lacking for ideas, however, I would like to just have all of this done. Doing it in pieces, just make sure that I don't get, you know, bored. Ridiculously, because like I said, it is boring. But like I'm kinda just like blacking out right now, listening to the music, not really paying attention to what I'm seeing on the screen, I'm just getting the data. This is just me collecting the data right now, so like I said, I apologize that it's very boring, however. Completely, completely necessary. So I might do a part two to this video, just so that you guys can. See a little bit more detail, maybe like a ten minute video or something after the. See a little bit more detail, maybe like a ten minute video or something after the fact. Just shows like the next step to this, and maybe this could be like a part one, part two type deal. Get it. Oh, wait, yeah, alright, so let's get it. Don't be saying nothing. Alright, so I do really wanna finish. Those other two keywords, however. For business purposes. And like I said. I need this video to be right around the hour mark. So I don't wanna go over by too much. So when I'm going through this keyword, it had to be important for me to remember that. I'm not looking for like topics that are. You know, people actually painting on canvases for art. I'm looking specifically for. Like residential house painting type videos and content. And products of that nature. Services of that nature. You see, I don't think any of this matters. Nothing skip. Like painting your face ASMR, painting you ASMR, painting your own car, painting your rifle. Painting your car at home, painting your AR fifteen, painting your nails, like none of that matters. Painting yellow miniatures, none of that matters to me. So. Painting your house exterior, painting your house interior, painting your front door. That's what I'm looking for. Those type of things. Nothing else matters there to me. Alright, so we got about five minutes left here on this video. I'm gonna go ahead and switch gears and just show you. A little bit of what the deeper side of things looks like. Alright, so painting is done, so let's do painting since we're on painting, right? So for example, I'm wanna look more into one of these three topics. We come back over to our handy dandy YouTube. It's gonna make us a lot of money and I'm super excited about it here. And we click on the first one, painting your house exterior. So what do I see? Oh, actually, I, I don't wanna do it on this. Tab. So this is what I was working on the other day. But we're gonna s- go ahead and start over, so. I'll keep that stuff up here. So I'm on my YouTube home screen with the extension for vid- vid IQ. Um, if you don't have this software, I encourage you to get it. Um, it's what my mentor encouraged me to get to help. Do this. So we get Lowe's Home Improvement. Almost one point two million subscribers. That's kinda big. We wanna be related, connected to them. Paint sprayer tips, home with Stephanie. Twenty thousand views four months ago, about a hundred eighty subscribers. Four-step process to painting your home, Paint Life TV. Over half a million subscribers here. And he's coming up as the top channels. So two point nine seven million subscribers, home rental vision DIY. This guy's really good, I think. Think I've come across his videos before. So we open all three of these. And it's a good thumbnail, right? How to paint a house, has his face on it, looks like a nice personal brand. Channel. So he has video chapters. What's this, the intro? Video chapters. He's sitting there talking about it, going through it, showing different products that he uses. Explaining and elaborating really well on, you know, what he's doing while he's doing it. But this video is, almost has a million views and it was made eight years ago. Isn't that crazy? But it's really good, so then. We come over here, this is our vid IQ stuff telling us like their score for the video, popularity of the video based on engagement and views relative to other videos on YouTube. Ninety-nine out of a hundred would mean that it's in the ninety-ninth percentile videos on YouTube built on an equal weight of views and engagement. So eighty-two point eight is really good. Social engagement, I don't really worry about that too, too much. I definitely look at this though. High volume ranked tags, two point one out of five, performance thirty-five point six out of fifty. Actionable fifty out of fifty, so they definitely did all the SEO stuff correctly. Video optimization checklist is saying that the title is a little too long and it doesn't have end screens. So this was made like eight years ago, so not having end screens kinda makes sense. And then these are some of the tags. That they put on this video to help, help the video get found. When people were, you know, searching away, trying to find. Something similar to this. And then channel tags, these are the tags that have been used on this channel. So it's a great tool for research. So say if I wanted to talk about this topic, I would then. Pretty much go into the next step of the process. Um, I'd start researching the steps about painting your house exterior. Um, on my own and the manner that I do it, and then I'll put together the script. I will put together the voiceover and I would get that over to. My video editor and she would put it all together, make it look pretty and we will put the video out. And so that's a very quick summary of pretty much the steps. Again, I talked about it more in detail in a day in a life, so make sure you check that video out. And I think that is. What we have here today. So don't forget to like, subscribe and notify, alright? Please do me a huge, huge favor. And like, subscribe and notify helps the channel out a lot. It helps get this content to the people that really wanna see it. And again, we appreciate all of the help and support that we are going to get. We're starting small now. Again, you won't see my face too much more on these videos, however. Just to get it off the ground and give it a little bit of momentum and traction, I have to do these. So here I am. Please, please, please follow us on TikTok, IG and Facebook. Um, here at Land Love Home, we wanna make sure that we're taking our bare hands with the land. Utilizing our big brains, applying whatever we want to apply the plan to the land and then turn it into home. So you guys have a fantastic day. Thank you so much for watching and we'll see you next time.